Okay. Welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting of July 10, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, free from error, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ziegler?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Here.
Councilmember Gatchel?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Leader?
Here.
Councilmember Resnick?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Former president?
Thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Mr. Brown?
I don't have any changes around her other than I was going to make mention at the beginning of the meeting, we do have an upcoming joint meeting of the mayor and council and the planning commission that I wanted to put out a reminder for next Monday, the 16th, at 7:00 p.m., for the benefit of people here as well as people that might be watching on the...
Thank you. Any changes from the bench here? Okay. I thought it'd be a good thing to do to introduce, to begin with, we have Mr. Ken Milburn here from Merge Live. I wanted to introduce him. Would you like to make a comment or come up and introduce yourself? He's going to be doing our recordings here.
Yeah, hi Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. As you mentioned, we're going to be video recording the meetings. I want to thank Steve for also inviting me in. Certainly, if you have any questions about what we do here, feel free to ask. We do several communities in the area. We're glad to add Wixom to our portfolio.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda is the presentation, is the reaffirmation of the oath of office for Police Officer Andrew Tabor. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, Madam Clerk, Mr. Brown, and members of the public. My name is Ron Moore, and I'm the Public Safety Director for the City of Wixom. And I'm pleased and proud to introduce to all of you, for the first time, Police Officer Andrew Tabor. Andy, would you come up with your mom and dad and stand here next to the lectern with Andrew grew up in Livonia, where he played ice hockey for Livonia Churchill High School. He's a 2016 graduate of Fair State University, where he achieved a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice. Shortly after graduating from college, he applied and was hired to the City of Wixom, Wixom Police Department, as a Public Safety Aid. And as you know, that position, he works the front desk and assists the officers and our other staff with answering phones, taking care of prisoners, doing whatever paperwork, clerical work is required of him. Andy spent that time as a Public Safety Aid demonstrating a loyalty to the City of Wixom, to the police department, and to the people who live, work, and spend time in the City of Wixom. So when it came time for him to go to the police academy, and it was time for me to consider whether or not I wanted to promote him from the rank of Public Safety Officer to the rank of Police Officer, it was really a no-brainer for me. I'm proud of Andy. I welcome him aboard as our newest Police Officer. He is badge 31. And just to put that in a little bit of perspective, when Mayor Ziegler was a Police Officer for the police department, he was badge 8, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor.
Correct.
So Andy is now badge 31. At this time, Mayor, if you don't object, I would like to have Andy's father, Bill Tabor, pin his badge on him. And before we do that, there are some people I'd like to introduce, some family members of Andy's. Diane Frishauer is here, Andy's mom. Andy's grandparents, Ada and John Frishauer are here. And Andy's dad, Bill Tabor, is here. And at this time, I'd like to have Bill pin the badge on his son. And I will confess to you, we did practice that in my office because it is no easy feat getting that pinned through there without stabbing the individual. So we did practice that. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind administering the reaffirmation of oath of office to Police Officer Andrew Tabor.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Constitution of the United States of America, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Wixom, Oakland County, Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of Police Officer according to the best of your ability?
I will.
And Mayor, that does conclude my presentation at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as is our custom, we're going to take about a 10 or 15-minute break and invite anybody here to help celebrate. And we've got cake provided by Caroline back there and crew, so we'll just take an adjournment and eat cake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, I guess we'll go back to our meeting here. We lost some people, but that's okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 26, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Move. To board.
Anybody have any changes, additions, subtractions? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. And under correspondence, there's one item. It's a notice of hearing before the Michigan Public Service Commission for customers of DTE Electric Company, case number U-20029. Next item on the agenda is the first call to the public. I'll read the rules for public speaking. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority of vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council. And all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anyone wishing to address the council this evening on any agenda items? Seeing no one come forth, I'll close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda are the city managers' reports. The first item is the fire monthly report for May 2018. Anybody have any questions, comments? Next item is the police monthly report for May 2018. Anything? Mr. Resnick?
Just one question. I know that the TSI initiative now will have been in full force part of June and into July. So in June's report, will those show up under the traffic offenses or other traffic complaints?
Whatever the council wishes. If you want me to create a separate category to document that, I'm happy to do so. Absent that, it would show up just under regular traffic.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Sure.
Certainly. Happy to do that, for sure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Beagle?
Under group B crimes, it's the peaking tom, sex offense, other, there's two there. We haven't had one in the past. Can you get a breakdown on that?
Yes, that was one individual that we believe was responsible for two separate incidents. And we identified him and we're in the process of seeking a complaint warrant form.
Thank you. Mr. Gatchel?
Thank you. Is that, I don't recall having seen that before. I know in the past you had talked about maybe revamping the breakdown of these. Is that a part of that, or was this just, it came up, so we inserted?
That. When, you know, for us to list every group B crime and put zeros, it would be a very lengthy report. So Mrs. Shave, records manager, when something does occur, she just adds it to the list.
Okay. All right. Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
So move. To board.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is new business. First item is the recommendation to award the 2018 Industrial Road Construction Maintenance Program to Florence Cement Company of Shelby Township, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $1,375,306, and to award the construction engineering to the city engineering firm of Hubble Rothen Clark, Inc., in the amount of $101,790, along with approval of the associated budget amendments. Do I have a motion?
Move. To board.
Discussion.
Hi, Tim. Hi. So this is a number of industrial roads in Wixom that we've looked at and have lower-than-desirable Paser ratings, as you know, and we'll be reconstructing some, and we'll be just milling and filling other areas, and then doing some concrete work along with that. So depending on what the fix was, we looked at it and put that all out on one industrial roads bid. When we had it engineered, earlier, we had the design engineering, but we did not have coverage for the inspections, and we want to make sure that this is right. So we've included that on this report as well.
Mr. Resnick?
I noticed that one of the bidders also bid on the next agenda item, and I know we'll get there next, but the question is, did any of the applicants have an interest on doing a package deal? Bidding on both, so we can get some economies of scale, sharing of equipment, or whatever?
So, in a sense, yes, and they teamed up differently, although there are different names on some of these. They took different contractors for different things. You know, we were looking at a couple of them and their subcontractors all kind of looked similar, and they, you know, depending on what they were doing, you know, it made a consideration. This one particularly, there's more concrete on this one than there is asphalt, so it does make sense to have Florence Cement get this one. They can, you know, that's what they do. And on this, the parking lots, it's more asphalt and reconstruction and that kind of thing. So, yeah, we considered it, but, you know, it gets kind of complicated when you start fixing them.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Gatchel?
Just, this is mainly for hot mix asphalt, the industrial roads, right, we're not doing the concrete yet?
So, correct. On Avante and Lori Lane and, what is it, Anna Court, we will be resurfacing the concrete and the asphalt there with asphalt. The Magellan and the Cartier is the cement work, plus we've got some cement work in Century Industrial as well, so I guess it's a split.
Those aren't going to be a complete tear-out, though? The concrete's not going to be a complete tear-out, it's just...
There is a portion that's going to be a complete tear-out on Anna Court, or Avante.
Okay, but not all of it?
But not all of it, yeah. And we're trying to, you know, trying to make it, you know, the best of both worlds, if you will. That's why, if you remember, our roads report, we use the best fixes for what we're looking at, so that's kind of how the management of fixes, if you will.
It's just mostly cash, I understand.
You're right.
Like they did on N5 and other places.
Yep.
Overall, though, with my aim of where the money's coming from for these projects, from the budget stabilization fund, I just, overall, don't think it's the best decision to have that one down so quickly for non-emergency projects, so overall, I support this project.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sigmund, if you could help me out, I thought we had quite a bit of LDFA money cited to take care of these particulars, some of these streets, the last time I heard.
We did have some LDFA money. What we're utilizing that for is the West Road project, and then we had some for Back Road. If we do, and we're still finalizing West Road, so we want to make sure that we have those funds available. If, they're going to end up at the same location, if you will, so if we can, we're going to spend all of the LDFA money.
And if you could help me out, wasn't it about three, more than $3 million?
There was the $3 million, and we spent, last year was Wixom West Tech and Back Road, we spent just over 1.8, and then we had the portion that we're doing on West Road. So I'm thinking that we'll have about $250,000 left after West Road, and if that's the case, we'll do a budget amendment to move that money into this program.
Well, help me out, like I said, when you talk about West Road, you're talking about from Beck to the heading?
To Novi, yes, just that east.
Didn't we get a $2 million grant that Hubble Roth Clark worked on, so for that?
We got $809, $800 and some, yeah, almost $900,000 for that from FAC money.
Okay.
And it's running about 1.3.
So, how much LDFA money did you say was left right now?
I think...
About one and a half?
There should, with everything, I think we have like $250,000 left.
You're talking about money?
After West Road.
You're talking about after West Road?
Right.
So...
If that's the case, we're not quite sure that we'll have that, depending on how we finalize West Road.
Okay. How much money is right now in the LDFA?
I'd have to get with Maryland on that.
Rough idea, Mr. Brown?
No, I'd have to rely on what Tim's got there. I haven't looked at it that number recently.
Because, I mean, if we're getting the $900,000 and it's a 1.2, that's $300,000 of the LDFA. Shouldn't it be quite a bit of money still left in the LDFA? Because I don't know where we spent it then.
We spent it on West Road, last year on West Road, Frank Street, Anthony, and Wixom West Tech, and Tech Drive.
Okay. Like I said, I just, I remember seeing these road names when they first talked about doing the LDFA.
Yeah, it's, it's long in coming.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Don't worry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, we've been waiting to get these done for quite a while, and I'm glad that we've got them bid out and we're going to take action on it. Got a motion and a second to award the 2018 Industrial Road Construction Maintenance Program to Florence Cement Company of Shelby Township, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $1,375,306, and to award the construction engineering to the city engineering firm of Hubble Roth and Clark, Inc., in the amount of $101,000, along with the approval of the associated budget amendment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mayor Ziegler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatchel?
No.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Leader?
Yes.
Councilmember Resnick?
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is recommendation to award the 2018 Parking Lot Improvement Program to Best Asphalt, Inc., of Romulus, Michigan, for an amount not to exceed $865,302,28, and to award the construction engineering to the city engineering firm of Hubble Roth and Clark, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $84,740. Do I have a motion?
So move. To board.
Discussion.
So this improvement will be for the parking lot here on campus, on the city hall campus. It'll extend from community center all the way over to the entrance here on the west side. We wanted to get this one in sooner as opposed to later with the other two parking lots that we intend to do, primarily because we had the engineering completed on this, for one, and secondly, so that we can ensure that we have the entire parking lot completed before the elections in November. We will be working around our August 7 primaries, and we're working with our clerk on that to make sure that there won't be any interferences on that. We're going to start on the west end and work our way around.
Mr. Gatchel?
Thank you. Going into that a little bit more, not interfering with the primary election, are we going to be starting the project at all before then, or how are we working around?
So what they'll do to initiate will be, they have a number of catch basins for drainage that they'll be repairing, and once those are repaired throughout the area, they will start, we'll do it in two phases, basically. It'll divide, running down this entry road here, going straight back, and we'll do the police station and the employee parking first, and hopefully, there'll be room there to, you know, ingress and egress during that time. And then, when that's complete, or down to the first wear course, they'll start on the other side. So we anticipate that they'll start on the other side after August 7.
So the first part will be done before the election and wrapped up, and the second part will start after?
That's the goal. Either way, they'll be, they won't be working on the 7th, and they'll be able to, all the voters will be able to come in without a problem.
Okay. Yeah, that parking, because it gets the, especially around before and afterward, packed.
Yes, and we're also...
Maybe we're not cutting away any spaces.
Right.
And then, the other, did we talk with any of these bidders throughout the process, or all of them, about, okay, we have this project that we're requesting a bid on, but we have the fire department parking lot, we have the city parking lot, that way they're aware of it, and see if they can extend pricing or anything like that?
Yes, they were, and we had hoped, actually, that, you know, the folks that were already working on Highgate was, you know, would be competitive as well. And, you know, we thought that each one kind of would work on its own merits and bring, you know, those same bidders in. We did see those bidders come in again, so we thought we'd get the economies of scale there. They did bid on this one as well, and...
That's Cadillac, right?
Yeah, and their subs. And, you know, Cadillac, yeah.
Okay. So we aren't really sure when we go out to bid for the other two parking lots, if we'll have the same group, or pricing is going to be as favorable if we had gone out with all three projects together?
We're, I guess we thought about that, but we didn't think that we were going to save that much on this particular project, in being that we want to make sure that this one is complete. That's where we were, and that's why we shut it down.
All right. Thank you.
And to extend, we're not finished with the fire department, you know, the planning on that yet, so to have that wait an extra month, I want to make sure that we get at least this one completed, ending, you know, before the end of the year.
Mr. Resnick?
With the construction method that you're using, what's the expected life expectancy of the new parking lot?
The new parking lot, my expectation is 20 years. If you could confirm our engineering, that's what we get.
Yeah, so we are going to be rebuilding this parking lot, so the expected life of that will be 20 years with some maintenance, as, you know, asphalt starts to crack, but we do have some minor maintenance done in that 20-year period, but we do expect...
Will catch basins be concrete apron?
Yes, I believe we're doing that, yes.
We have that, and we have better drainage.
Okay, so then, will it be concrete apron on the...
And we're fixing the drainage, so hopefully, the base is in a little better shape.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just swinging back to the two election dates.
Yes.
Make sure I understand correctly. It sounds like the, for the 7th primary, which is probably a little lighter than the, you know, general, will have fairly minimal disruption. Things won't be complete, there'll be things in the works, not that particular day.
Right.
The main parking area will be fairly free and open away from, you know, okay.
Yes.
And then, it sounds like the, at least the goal is to be complete by the November election.
Correct.
It's getting pretty cold then, anyway.
Right.
That's all, I just said, that's correct.
That is correct.
Again, thank you. Thank you, too.
Mr. Beagle?
Just, why are we installing security fences for the police vehicles? We've never done that before.
So, part of the security for the police was for, you know, the employee parking, and with the changes that we're seeing out in the general populace, there's some concern about, you know, when you're going into work and when you're coming out of work. We want to have, that fencing would have a security about it that they can't, that folks, normal folks can't see in, and, you know, so it would add some added protection for the employees there.
And how much space is that going to take away from our parking back there?
It'll, it should only take away the spaces of the police cruisers that are out there and the employees that work there.
So, 15 cars?
They'll, I think it has room for 36, 36 cars back within the fencing.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will that impede the other departments coming over and dropping off prisoners if there's a fence around everything?
It'll only impede the, no, in short, no. The Sally Port, the garage doors is where they drop off the prisoners, and it'll actually approve that because they don't have, there's no access from behind the fences, if you will, for that, you know, for potential people trying to break the chain, if you will, of moving people in.
Karen, I have a question for you. What's involved in construction engineering for a parking lot?
It's primarily layout, so all the survey and the grading, get the appropriate grades for the parking lot, the curbs, the basins, and then we're going to have a full-time inspector out here on site the entire time, just to make sure everything goes according to plan. This is a very visible project in the city, so we want to make sure that we have someone out here full-time answering any questions for the contractor or anyone that may be coming in.
So we don't normally have someone sitting out there full-time when we do construction projects?
We generally do, yes.
So that's nothing different, then?
No, it's nothing different than normal.
Okay. How long is it going to take to do the parking lot?
We have an eight-week construction schedule in there.
Okay.
So we're hoping eight weeks.
Besides weather, do you see anything else that might take care of and push that out?
Besides weather, I don't see anything that would push that out.
Okay. So, the curbs and stuff, the curbing area in the layout that we have now, are we changing that at all? Because I don't have a blueprint of what we're doing.
We're making some minor adjustments to improve drainage... We're making some minor adjustments to improve drainage and-
Drainage, so that's a, um, grading of the property?
Grading, and, yes, making sure that, we're putting in some additional piping and additional edge drains to help keep the water off of the surface and extend the life of the parking lot.
Okay. Um, Mr. Sigma, are we looking at bidding out the fire department yet, or are we just starting on it?
We're, we are looking at bidding out, in fact, we're, we're looking at bidding that one out along with the, what we're calling the Wayne Stock parking lot.
Okay.
And we'll do those simultaneously.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest that, you know, when they bid this out, they look at a different city engineering firm to do the engineering work, to see if we are able to get a better deal on these type of things. This one, these two particular projects are $185,000 for, for engineering. Thank you very much, Mr. Sigma.
Um, Mr. Gatchel?
Thank you. Um, we're, I'm trying to imagine what we're fencing off, where we're fencing off for 30, 36 spaces, and what material's gonna be used, like, what's it gonna look like? We don't have plans.
So the fencing, the fencing is designed with a, I believe it's eight feet, and it'll have a vinyl, a black vinyl, uh, through the chain link, and it will go almost straight back from the wall here, going, going back to the, the turn, if you will, and coming straight across, and then coming back down along the generator side as well.
So are people gonna be able to loop around from here?
Yes, yes.
How many, how many rows is that gonna extend, or?
That'll, that'll, uh, they'll be, on, on the outside, they'll have parking going into the hill, and then on the other side of the fence, they'll have parking going into the fence. So there'll be a, there'll be parking on both sides, going all the way around that, that particular area.
From, I guess, from the curb, since we're in a rectangle right now, like, how, how many feet or yards are we going out from where the curb starts to curve into what's there now?
So, what's, what's there now, you have, uh, I think four, four different car lengths with two, two drives in between them, and what you'll have after that is one drive on the outside that goes around and two, two, uh, parking end-to-end on the outside.
And the, that's gonna be completely enclosed with chain link, uh, like a weaved plastic that you sometimes see that's green in old people's houses?
Yeah.
I didn't look at you.
What do you mean, old?
I didn't look at you. No, I, I think everybody's kinda seen it, sometimes it's white, sometimes it's green, but they either go vertically or on an angle if they're trying to make it look less bad, but.
It'll, I, I believe it's all vertical.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know, given the fencing aspect of it as well, aside from my other objection, where the, the funding is coming from, I think ultimately that's gonna take away from parking for city events, but more importantly for election kind of stuff. Um, I don't know what the, the plan is to kind of recruit those spaces during elections, and frankly, I'm not, not sold on the idea of fencing everything off over there with, and the materials we went through, 'cause I don't think it's gonna look that great. Thank you.
Mr. Beagle?
Definitely good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any else?
Okay. Um, we have a motion and a second to award the 2018 Parking Lot Improvement Program to Best Asphalt Inc. of Romulus, Michigan, and to award an amount not to exceed, um, $865,302.28 and to award the construction engineering to the city engineering firm of Luthen Clark, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $84,740. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatchel?
No.
Councilmember Kennedy?
No.
Councilmember Leader?
Yes.
Councilmember Resnick?
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Mayor Ziegler?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is a recommendation to accept Lindau Associates Architects, AIAPC of Brighton, Michigan, proposal for bid developments and construction, um, administration services for the re-roofing of the City Hall and Community Center roofs for an amount not to exceed $10,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support? Okay, discussion.
So this, uh, we, we talked to, uh, two of the roofing contractors we typically use for, um, the repairs that we've been doing over the last several years here at, um, City Hall and the Community Center, and, uh, you know, we, based, um, on their recommendations, we had kinda asked them if we could, you know, help us draw up the specifications, and they said, "Well, you need an architect." They want, there are so many cuts up, uh, above, um, you know, because of the HVAC units and, uh, the various spans and whatnot that, uh, we, they weren't, uh, willing to just give us a price on fixing it, or, or replacing it, excuse me. So, we, we have, uh, got a quote from Lindau, they've, they've been our architects for several years here. Uh, they actually did the architecture work at, uh, Community Center and the Gibson House, and, uh, we're familiar with their work, they know what we are looking for, and, uh, we think we can get some, the, the good value for this, so we would like to, um, utilize their expertise in helping us write up the specifications for the, for the roof. And that's what she said before.
Mr. Resnick?
Yeah, and, in the write-up, uh, there was discussion about the fact that most clients take the opportunity to add insulation. I, at the time of, and this is a cement membrane roof, I'm, so, okay. And I know I've, I've done that with some of my commercial buildings, but the, but there's an inability to do it for some reason?
So, so they were, they, uh, they're looking at, uh, the, the weight of that, and they have to have like, uh, two times the, the weight of a typical snowfall, or the, the, a foot of snow, I should say, on that roof, and along with, uh, with the insulation, um, they're not recommending it just because they don't see that we'll get the value that, that we need, you know, through the next 30 years or 20 years of, uh, of the roof, and so.
And that value would be created in energy savings sense of, okay.
It's, it's, it's too small for that with the expense that we'd see adding that insulation.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a recommendation to convene a closed session of the City Council in accordance with the Michigan Open Meetings Act after council comments for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support? Ms. Buck?
Councilmember Gatchel?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Leader?
Yes.
Councilmember Resnick?
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Mayor Ziegler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is second call to the public. Um, I read the, um, rules for public speaking a little earlier, and I didn't see anybody come in the room since I read them, so, um, I'm just gonna, um, forego that formality and, um, open it up to second call of the public. Anybody wishing to address the council this evening on any issue, please come up and introduce yourself and, and, uh, place of residence and, uh, and, uh, let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Sue Kenny, and I reside at 3269 Theodore East, but I have two businesses on Wayne Stock, a daycare and a hair salon. I'm here for the house that's next door to the daycare, it's 49361 Wayne Stock. This house has been empty for five years now. It's causing major problems with being empty, the animals. I have several pictures that I made for each one of you if I can-
Sure. Thanks.
When the woman died five years ago, uh, we called in animal control. They took out several cats that had been dead for several months, they said, because they were just burned bones, but they also left several living in the house because they said cats can live alone as long as the new owners that inherited the house would feed them and keep heat. Now they're putting food and water in the garage. Now there is, the smell is horrendous. There's so many raccoons, brown hogs, and I don't even get any tell what other animals there, um, living on this property. The owners have neglected it so much over the years that I think it's picture four. Four, I'd like you to try to find the picnic table in the backyard. I did put a black arrow. The grass is so high, I mean, they don't take care of this yard at all. The first picture is what I deal with, with the raccoons coming in. Raccoons, brown hogs, raccoons that are out during the day, which they're nocturnal animals, so they shouldn't be out during the day. More garbage, more raccoons, the cat that lives there, one of them, there's several. And then, when we open the playground after the winter, the last picture is it looks like a playground from the animals. I've had a problem, um, it was about two years ago, the side of my building and their house, there were so many trees and this, these yards not to hear, there were ticks. We sent some of them off to Lansing to be tested for Lyme disease. They were fine, they were not. The raccoons are really taking over. We caught four. This morning, there was two more running on the ramp. I had one of the employees, she was out sweeping the ramp. The ramp goes up and then there's two steps down. As she's sweeping, it's coming out at her under the steps. Um, we've caught four in Lyme traps. We've talked with, uh, the VNR. It's getting bad. This house is in such, such disarray. Um, a police officer told me there was a homeless man living in the garage, and, um, I heard from somebody else that he had broken the door to the house and was living in the house too. I don't know at what point though, 'cause I just heard about it a couple days ago. Could've been years ago, not sure. Um, there was an inspection on the house because somebody tried to buy it, uh, a month or two ago. The foundation is crumbling. There's so much work that needs to be done. This person was willing to do, she was gonna put a lot of money into putting a business in there. The owner, homeowners, say it's sentimental value, they won't double the price to fix the foundation. I'm asking for help. This is next to a daycare. I can't have these animals like this. What can I do next to get this off of them?
Well, I think that one of the things you'd, that, uh, you'd have to do is work with the administration, uh, and, and, uh, have them take care of it, because, uh, I mean, it, you know, that's, I'm sure, speaking for all of us, we would, would like you to have your problem addressed, but, um, but, but the administration is the one that would take care of it. Steve, do you have any, uh, comments you wanna make?
Yeah, we'll have a, uh, evaluation of the house done through our building department, through our state full contractors to take a look at and see what the situation is from the exterior and see what next steps might be appropriate.
I had worked with Debbie Parker for the last few years. She's been over there and taken pictures of the animals through the windows and stuff. She said, go to her, she's done with these people too.
Right.
I've had this officer say to me, "Please go to her and get something done."
Right.
I mean, it's not just me, it's everybody.
Well, absolutely.
Mr. Redd? I think, I think this meets the elements of a public nuisance, that if, and basically under, somebody owns the property right now, correct?
The daughter inherited it.
Okay.
She doesn't, nobody lives there, they have it for five years.
So where is it, you said, maybe it's owned at Chicago?
Yeah, then, I mean, if, if it was, um, declared a public nuisance, they'd be responsible to, within six months to a year, manage all, you know, with benchmarks going forward, otherwise, I think the city can take possession of it.
Yeah, we, we had a, um, you know, in the recent past, we've had a, that situation, um, up by the golf course up in the north end of town that, um, that we ended up having to condemn and, and have it taken care of, so.
The only thing I would say, it's sort of in line with what Councilman Leader said, is, um, any of those processes, it's, it's not gonna be instantaneous relief, it's gonna be a longer-term process, just to keep your expectations up.
Five years, so.
Yeah, understandable and, and realistic, I guess is how I would put it, so, um, that's a long-term process, but we can take a look at and see what the options are from, uh, from a code enforcement standpoint.
Sure.
Best-case scenario is if the current owners would, would bring it up to a state that would not be problematic and not lead to that step, because it's gonna be more quickly resolved in that way, but it doesn't sound like that's, uh, anything that you're hopeful of, uh, but that would be the best-case scenario. If we had to go the other route, it takes a good, long period of time, I just wanna be realistic about it.
Miss Kenny here, you can have your pictures back, we had a chance, I had a chance to look at them, in case you need it for somebody else. Why, just, you might, you might need them for something else here.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and, um-
Thank you.
-the administration will be taking care of that, looking at it. Uh, anyone else? Mr. Peltow?
My name is Chuck Peltow, resident in 1960 Roxbury Run in Wickson for the last 33 years, and I wanted to address the Traffic Safety Initiative. Our home backs up to Loon Lake Road, and over the course of the years, you've seen the traffic patterns change and activities change. Uh, Loon Lake Road, Charms Road, Maple Road are becoming more east-west thoroughfares. Uh, you're seeing changes in traffic patterns, it's not residential, you're seeing people pass through. It's a, it's a handy way to get from the Wald Lake area, the M5 exit, up into the Commerce and up into Milford area. Um, last spring, I believe, the mayor and the chief attended a homeowners association meeting where we had put together some concerns. Uh, there's a number of crosswalks, I believe it's five pedestrian crosswalks that are marked through there. Uh, I believe, and please don't quote me on this, I'd have to look at it again, but I believe there's 27 school bus stops and about 200 kids that are picked up. The biggest change at that, or the biggest concern at that point in time was at Loon Lake Elementary were, uh, disregard for the, the school crossing, but recent events have typified that you're seeing greater concern and unfortunately resulted in a death, and you're, in which the chief initiated TSI, which we fully support. We also understand that the city runs on budgets, you have resources that you have to use to the best, you're stewards of, of the resources that you're, you're trusted with, and we appreciate that. We also understand is that, right now, the Traffic Safety Initiative is three times a week for a three-hour period.
Yes.
And that's being covered on overtime. The resources within the police department to do it on a regular basis are not there. The question that I would ask is that, we also recognize that you have high-density areas to the south, which accommodate or account for a high number of the, the police calls, but you've also got the northern section of the city, largely residential, largely changing now to thoroughfare. If you look at the stats when they run the radar techs on there, you see that averages, and Will Rogers, I guess, said there's, there's three kinds of liars. You got liars, you got damn liars, and you got statisticians. So if you look at the statistics, the average was 33 miles per hour, 32, when I, when I looked at him and got him to the, from the chief. But that takes into consideration people coming and slowing down to drop off their kids at- kids at Loon Lake School, because you had the school here, the radar here, so they picked up everybody slowing down. Guess what? Ahead of that and beyond that, they're not doing twenty-five. The only thing that we would like to do, I guess I'm speaking as myself and from dealing with it, speaking with my neighbors, you stewards of the resources for the city. The resources are what the chief needs if we're gonna have more than three times a week, for nine hours a week, for traffic enforcement in the whole northern section of the city, and in the section of the city where a kid got killed because of a speeder. So we would ask, take that into consideration, and take a look, you've just brought in a new police officer, which is great, but take a look at how you're gonna utilize those resources, and how you're gonna authorize the chief to utilize those resources to do something to bring the speed down. It's, if anybody has a doubt as to what the traffic patterns are, or what the speed is, come on over, sit on our deck, we'll have a glass of iced tea, and you can watch and golf and down east and west on Loon Lake Road. You need to do something, you need to do something now, and you need to make it so that it's not just a flash in the pan. Do it, because unfortunately, a kid got killed, and by next spring, people forgot about it, and you're back to business as usual. I think we want you to do something.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, close the second call to the public. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's comments. Mr. Brown?
A couple items that I would highlight from my city manager's update, Your Honor. We had an audit of the grant that was utilized to purchase the Airline Trail property that was received or accepted in November of 2016. There was an audit that was performed on that, and we had noticed from the Michigan Department of Transportation that no audit findings were present, and there were no issues with that grant, so congratulations to staff that was involved in the administration of that. And Wicksum continues to take sort of a lead on the Airline Trail development, because somebody has to be in charge of basically accepting money and dispersing funds and those kind of things, and the city continues to play that role for the Trailway Council, as we did on the purchase that was referenced in this audit. Parks and Recreation, FYI, Hot Blues and Barbecue event is not this week, Thursday, but the following week, Thursday, July nineteenth, from six to ten p.m. at Sibley Park. On economic development front, we want to welcome Wings, et cetera, and Wilson Marine to the city of Wicksum as well. We're pleased to have new citizens, new corporate citizens in our community. And another comment on the DTE power outages, we continue to solicit for residents that have been impacted by power outages from DTE. To get in touch with city administration, you can contact us at citymanager@wixomgov.org. By email, that's citymanager@wixomgov.org, or you can contact us by telephone at 248-624-0894. Again, that's 248-624-0894. We are interested in getting information from residents that are impacted by ongoing power problems through DTE, because we're looking to do a communication with DTE on this to try to bring some added attention to this issue that's present in our community. Last thing I'd like to make mention of is joint meeting. Again, I mentioned it quickly at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to be having a joint meeting of the mayor and council and planning commission next Monday, that's July sixteenth, and that meeting starts at seven o'clock. The purpose of that meeting is to discuss and go through the proposed master plan update that we are finishing up with. There's gonna be some different topics that will be discussed related to that, including our downtown Village Center area, as well as the recently sold property that was known as the Ford Motor Plant in the past, that's been purchased by Industrial Commercial Properties. We're looking for some feedback as to how people would like to see that site developed as well. So that's some of the stuff that will be covered at the meeting. Again, reminder for that, Monday, the sixteenth, at seven p.m. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Smiley?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, congratulations again to Officer Andrew Taber. Welcome to the police force. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Gatchel?
Thank you. Congratulations as well to Officer Jayborne, thank you for your commitment to the city and its residents. And regarding the DTE issues, I'm not sure what the response has been like. I know we've been doing the sign-out run, I think I've seen it on the eve of the Friday Eve blast and whatnot, but I know we go out and buy yard signs or lawn signs for, like, different events. I don't think it'd be that expensive to get a few of those and put them out in front of subdivisions and have been experiencing problems, just, hey, having
Right.
Power problems, call, then the city number on there, or something, or email with the email address on there. I think that might connect, because I think most everybody's gonna be leaving their house once a day at least, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also welcome aboard Officer Taber to the police force, and personally, the TSI initiative, at least in the morning rush hour, I think it's been fairly effective. I've been setting my crews on Charms Road and setting my crews at thirty on Potter Road on the way in in the mornings, and I noticed that people are not extending their gap at a fast rate like they were prior to the initiative. So I think there's, at least the awareness is there. People are doing some of, at least in my estimate, somewhere between, you know, twenty-nine and then thirty-four miles per hour, which is a big difference from a few weeks earlier. So, keep it up, and thank you, Mr. Paltrow, for your remarks. I think we need to look seriously at this, especially as we expand the housing in the VCA area and up to Maple Road, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome aboard to Officer Taber. It'd be a nice addition to our police department, and everybody have a good time with the red hot and blues.
Thank you.
Mr. Leader? I'd also like to welcome Officer Taber, and just want to thank the residents for coming out and providing feedback as to certain issues that may or may not have escaped us, you know, from time to time. As far as the traffic initiative, I've noticed it as well, seeing it going to and from. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Beagle?
Thank you. Once again, I just want to welcome Officer Taber to the Wicksum Police Department, and looking forward to seeing everybody at the Hot Blues and Barbecues next Thursday, and welcome to Wicksum, Wilson Marine and Wings, et cetera. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go to Wings, et cetera, yet, but it's very, food was tasty and everything was good, and glad that they're there. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. A couple of things. Of course, welcome to Officer Taber. Also, I understand that we have a new arrival from one of our family, Wicksum family here, Ms. Raditz apparently had a baby daughter. Congratulations to her and her husband and family, and hope everybody's doing well, and I understand they are, so that's great. We also have a new, I think maybe we announced it last time, a new senior coordinator. I stopped by and met her the other day, and seems like she's getting settled quite well, and happy to have her, and I encourage everybody to stop by and visit her, introduce yourself to her. On this meeting that we're gonna have next week with the planning commission, and I think that, you know, the way this has come about has been interesting, I think, because, and I think we talked about it, Mr. Kennedy, last week when you brought it up, and the idea that the community, people from the community have talked to me and said things like, "We didn't know this was going on," similarly to what you were saying. "We didn't, I didn't know this, that they redrew the boundaries of the VCA," and I think those are the comments that you made. And I think that reflecting back on some of the things that were happening back earlier this year and late last year, my recollection is that we did, in fact, have a couple of meetings that took place with the planner, and it was in this room, at least one of them was in this room, and he had different charts and graphs up here, and I think one of them, in fact, was the proposed new plan, master plan, with the changes, and, but the problem, at least, that I kind of got after the fact, was that there was no comparison. There wasn't a side-by-side comparison. So I guess, I guess one of the things that I would hope to have next week, when we do have this discussion, is a side-by-side comparison, so that, so that we can see what the changes are being proposed, and some rationalities for making the changes, because I, the feedback that I get from people that I talk to is that they don't want to see this, these changes, but that's something that we can talk about when we get to the meeting on Monday, so. And as far as the speeding goes, you know, I certainly empathize with the people out there, and the problems that we have with traffic. We just had two retirements out of the police department. One of them has been replaced now, so we're still down. I would hope to get to full strength as quickly as possible, and maybe spend a little more time, you know, doing the traffic enforcement types of programs that we've got going, so I do empathize with you. Having said all that, we'll take an adjournment, and a five-minute adjournment, and have our closed session, and come back afterwards, okay? Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved, supported.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. As a result of our discussions, I think there's a couple of items. Kathy, do you need a number on these?
I've got the numbers.
Okay. All right, well then, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the tentative agreement dated June nineteenth, 2018, between the city of Wicksum and the Police Officers Labor Council, patrol officers. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the collective bargaining agreement from July first, 2018, through June thirtieth, 2021, on behalf of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign the MERS documents to modify the defined contribution and healthcare savings plan documents to reflect the adopted changes.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved? All right.
I'd like a motion to ratify the tentative agreement dated July ninth, 2018, between the city of Wicksum and the Government Employees Labor Council slash clerical and library employees. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the collective bargaining agreement for July first, 2018, through June thirtieth, 2021, on behalf of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign the MERS documents to modify the defined contribution and healthcare savings plan documents to reflect the adopted changes.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, supported.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody.